Okay, moving on to item number 18. Solid Waste Recycling Services Competitive Procurement Process. City Manager, Steve Kroger.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I think, are the Fire Chief still here? So, I think we're gonna have, when he eventually retires, I think we're gonna have a picture of Mr. Pete Daley up there, and I'm gonna be able to say, "We got our money's worth out of him." But it's time to replace him, so. No, no, no. I said, "When that time comes." In the meantime, we're still getting our money's worth out of him. So, we'll keep running him, alright?
We have to increase the numbers a little bit up on the.
Yeah. You're gonna leave here happy, no matter what, tonight, aren't you? And a couple new shiny red fire trucks. Good for the community of Uba City. So, Mr. Members of the council, good evening. The matter before you this evening is the competitive procurement process for solid waste and recycling services. Earlier this year, your council considered a series of options for solid waste and recycling beyond the year of 2019, September of that year. Your council directed staff to proceed with a competitive procurement process. So, since that time, staff has been working on a scope of services. We have done this in coordination with our other agencies in the area, recognizing that whether such a scope would be used for a competitive process or a negotiated process, it made sense that all of us get together and develop a good base document that could be established for the best practices in the industry. So, with that document, staff is now recommending retaining the firm of Sloan-Vasquez-McAfee. Immediately in front of me, you will recognize Joe Sloan with that firm who's been before your council in the past. Our relationship with Sloan-McAfee, pardon me, Sloan-Vasquez-McAfee, does branch back to 2011. They've worked with us closely, and in fact, they were the firm that developed the scope of services as well. They've submitted a proposal. That proposal is included in your agenda packet for review and consideration. It does outline a timeframe for the finalization of that scope that would, of course, come back for final review by your council, the receipt of the proposals, and then proposal evaluation until early 2018. Of course, always happy to answer any questions that you might have at this time. I do expect that you have a fair amount of public input this evening, so if you prefer to wait till the end of that, that would be fine as well. I do have, I guess, one off-the-cuff request. I've been working for the community here for 17 years, been a happy citizen here for 23. I've always found that all of our discourse, when we sometimes agree to disagree, it's been civil, and that's one of the reasons why I like working for this community. And I just ask for that level of decorum this evening as we speak as a community on this matter. So, with that, Mr. Mayor, I will step away unless you advise me otherwise.
Please, go ahead and sit down, and if we have anything, we will request later. And at this moment, I am going to ask the council if they have any questions or comments directly related to the matter at hand here of having Mr. Sloan, or Sloan-McAfee-Vasquez. I always flip them around, if they have any questions or comments on it right at this moment. Now, the next comment is, we do know that there are comments based upon this item. While it's not directly on this item, we feel that it is proper to go ahead and let the public voice their thoughts on the whole process of the solid waste that we are looking at for the community. So, I will be calling up the names, and you will have three minutes to express what you have to say, and then please sit down so that the next one can come up. I will call the first one, and then a second one that would be, as they say in baseball, on deck. So, it's a little bit scribbled there, but it's, I'll just say the name. Kevin?
Yep.
Kevin Spees, or, okay. The P is one that confused me. Okay. And then on deck will be Mark Boomgarden.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council. I appreciate your time and consideration this evening. My name's Kevin Spees. I'm a resident businessman and Rotarian in the city of Elk Grove. I want to be clear about that. I want to make sure, or, excuse me, I want, I know you have much to talk about tonight, and so I won't make this go long. I'll get straight to the point. I'm here to voice my support for entering negotiations with Sloan-Vasquez and McAfee to start the RFP process. The RFP process is in the best interest of any constituent. The competition among contractors can yield better prices and better services. In fact, there are a few stellar competitors out there that have terrific resident satisfaction and low, practically nonexistent, trouble calls. Also, extremely high levels of community involvement and programs that have good practices for local and global environment. In Elk Grove, our service provider is Republic Services. I consider myself to be an extremely active member in the community, and I can tell you that I see Republic Services at every event that I attend. And honestly, I'm at three to four events each week. They're actively part of our community fabric. Their workers live with us. Their leadership serves with us, from the Elk Grove Chamber, to the Rotary, to the food closet. They have been faithful service providers to our residents for many years. So, it's in the best interests of, I believe it's in the best interest of constituents to evaluate all possible options and negotiate for best value. Please support your staff recommendation to enter the agreement. Thank you, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. After Mark Boomgarden, it would be John Cassidy. Mark's not here. Oh, there he is.
I'm here. It's been a while since I've.
You were in the shadow.
Yeah. It's been a while since I've been at this podium. I want to assure Fire Chief Pete Daley that there is life after the fire service, so. Excuse me. Mr. Mayor and members of the council, my name's Mark Boomgarden. I am the president of Valley Truck and Tractor, which is located here in Uba City with 10 locations throughout the North State. I'm going to speak to you this evening first as, on representing our company, but then as a citizen of Uba City. Our operation, as I mentioned, spans 10 locations, two of them here in Uba City and the rest ranging from Elk Grove up to Chico and throughout the northern Sacramento Valley. We are served by both Recology and other vendors for our waste management. We do also have agreements for special pickup, but those are the two that provide us with service. I want to make sure that you understand that as a commercial consumer, our rates are comparable, whether it's waste management, recology, et cetera. There's been some discussion about difference rates. I managed that aspect of our business for probably six years, and very happy with recology. What isn't comparable is the service levels. Specifically, I'm not going to poor-mouth any of the other vendors that we do business with, but I can certainly highlight the fact that Recology is there, they're local. When I pick up the phone, if I have a need at any of our recology-service locations, I get a local person who shows up or helps me and helps our business. They fast-response, and I would say that they are our business partner, and that is highly valued in a business such as ours. I would also like to address the city as a resident of 38 years, former city employee for 30 years, and your past Fire Chief. Pete does a great job for the 14 years. I have been and remain extremely happy with the services that Recology provided, not only as a citizen, but as a member of the Fire Department and city staff. There was never an instance where I needed help, either as an emergency agency or as a citizen, where Recology wasn't present and quick to respond. Our citizens value that. It's, and I'm not saying that others can't provide that service, but I know for a fact, and I can speak to the fact, that Recology continually provides that. Hazmat response, they were one of the first people to raise their hand when we developed the Fourth of July Kids Parade as well. I would admit that I am struggling to understand the option of spending $66,000 to $73,000 of taxpayer funds to pursue a bidding process managed by the same consulting firm that recommended attempting negotiations with the current provider, just first before going out to bid. As a former department head here in the city, I'm reasonably certain that the $50,000 to $60,000 of tax funds could be used in other ways to benefit our city. I respectfully request that you consider alternative three in support of going out, trying to figure a great negotiation with Recology, and if that doesn't work out, then you can go out and follow the bid process. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, after John Cassidy, we have Rick Jimmerson.
Mr. Mayor, I'm gonna interrupt.
Yes.
I just don't want people booing too. So, you know, you can't, the hard thing is, we can't clap and we can't boo.
They were booing me, it's okay.
Well, I guess they were clapping you, Mr. Cassidy. I'll just go with that. But you're meeting, Mr. Mayor, but I just wanna, sometimes that can get out of hand. Thank you.
Yes. Please respect that and try to stay as neutral as possible.
I think they're a boomin' boomer.
I get it.
Mr. Mayor, council members, appreciate your time tonight. Thanks for listening. Obviously, this is a big issue for this community. I'll move through my comments quickly. I'm John Cassidy. I live at 2057 Pheasant Drive, just on the north side of town here. I'm here as a homeowner, a rental owner, and I'm CEO of the largest financial institution that's headquartered here in Uba City. Tonight, you're gonna hear from many community leaders who are asking you, as a city council, to revote, to negotiate directly first with Recology, which in the opinion of many people this evening, Recology has been a legacy organization of the highest order for 43 years in this community. For many here this evening, and most of them are Uba City residents, you will hear again and again and again about Recology's commitment, involvement, and the investments they've already made in our community. Personally and professionally, I know that since I moved here in 1985, there is no other business, large or small, that has done more for this community in terms of giving dollars, which means something. Employee volunteer hours, use of equipment when needed, you just heard that from Mark, and cooked so many tremendous meals for so many community events and people in need. It's an extraordinary thing that they have done since I've been here in 1985. Over the past 33 years, I've worked shoulder to shoulder with the team at Recology, starting back with Ramoscochi and Eck Group. We were there in the 1986 floods, they were there in the 1986 floods, and 97, and they never stopped, and I was there with them, and we raised hundreds of thousands of dollars over a period of 33 years for flood opportunities that came along. And in 97, there was a lot of money that was built up over those years with the help of Recology to help people that never would've got that kind of help, because the money wasn't in this community to help them. Again, no other organization, since I've lived here in 1985, has done more for this community, period. And they don't have to. And that's the culture that they've established. Just as important, and you heard that from Mark, is their impeccable service reputation as a company and provider in Uba Sutter. They've earned that reputation by picking up people's garbage on time, operating a state-of-the-art transfer station, and for being available when a need arises. I've never heard one complaint in all the times I've lived here since 1985 about Recology's service, not one. That means something. It's obvious that all of you take your job seriously, or you wouldn't be sitting in those chairs. As I understand it from my research on this issue, Uba City is going it alone or attempting to potentially go it alone for its waste management services. First and foremost, knowing that the Austin Road landfill was the last landfill built in this state, and that was 22 years ago, that tells me that the permitting nightmare, dealing with the state of California, the Army Corps, and all you gotta do is look at the levees, the EPA, environmentalists, and whoever else wants to put up roadblocks is a staggering and extremely costly challenge, looking at $40 million in today's dollars, potentially, much more down the road. Your own hired consultant, Sloan Vasquez, said Recology's rates were competitive.
You're gonna need to wrap it up.
Yeah. It's my understanding also that the city staff initially recommended that you negotiate first before you go to a bid. As a person who's lived here and operated a financial institution, I've been on committees throughout the state of California, and this is a huge undertaking that you're considering, and you're risking the long-term pain for this city. For me, as a resident, the reasons not to negotiate in good faith with Uba City or with Recology and the city of Uba City do not exist. There's too many unknown variables. Recology has proven to be the best corporate citizen, the best corporate citizen this community has ever had since I've lived here, and they've earned the opportunity to negotiate in good faith. If that doesn't work out, you have the option to go to bid. Who in this room agrees with me? Stand up. Stand up. Thank you.
This is the kind of display that has been asked not to be done, so John is not appreciated at all. You're out of line.
I don't think I'm out of line at all.
That's your opinion.
These guys have done more in this community than anybody.
John, John, stop it.
Don't caution me in public. Don't do it. You don't want to go there.
Yes, John. Thank you. Council members.
Mr. Jimmerson?
Yes.
One moment, please. Ron Roman is on deck.
Rick Jimmerson, I'm a resident of Uba City, California, and I just have some things I'll go through here as quickly as possible. I know that time, we're trying not to be too redundant or replicant, so just quickly. Thank you very much. One thing I did want to note right away is that Grass Valley did go through a RFP a year ago, and went through all the processes and had all the headaches, and at their last council meeting here, the winning entity has come in and asked for to raise the rates. Nothing unusual about that, but just felt that we should all be aware that it's happened, and it happened real close. I have a few questions of the council, so may I, so I and we may have a better understanding of why you are taking certain actions. I see that the city spent $166,000 for a report including public forums and a study regarding fees and services to determine what action to take regarding contracts with our current waste provider. The recommendations to the council from the hired consultants were to negotiate with the current provider. The city staff made its recommendation to the council. They concur with the recommendations of Sloan-Vasquez-McAfee to negotiate with the current service provider and retain the option to conduct a competitive procurement process if negotiations prove to be unsuccessful. I understand, and many people here would like to know what it is that leads you to disregard the recommendations of a firm you paid $166,000, and also why you would completely ignore the staff recommendations, which were at that time in agreement. So, we don't know what it is that you know that they don't, even after you've spent the money. We know that we've got $200,000 plus of staff employees who are working on it, and if they couldn't actually do it as a job, and you cannot agree with what it is they said, then I'm wondering, have you already started the process to replace them? There's no need to spend that type of money for employees that cannot provide the services that we expect from, required by yourself. So, why have you hired a firm, again, or wanting to, and you've got it on the app to trust things tonight? So, I've originally brought this to your attention regarding the hidden fee that I refer to as a franchise fee. You've turned that into a reason to start an RFP. The city actually, last year, made more money off the contracts than the provider did. As a businessperson, that was my problem from the very beginning. It was all there, we showed it to you in the numbers, and we proved it. I have no relationship with Recology, any of their services or whatever. It's just simply I brought that up because if I was a businessperson and people were saying that I had raised my rates, when actually the city raised their rates, that's not correct. It's not a right way to run the business. So, other positions have done many of their buying opportunities through RFPs, and there's a time and a place for them. But having been where I've been and through my career and what we've done, relationships are a place to start, and not show the common courtesy of beginning a negotiation before calling for an RFP was a great oversight by this council. I don't appreciate it. I know you're wrong. I don't just think you're wrong. Thank you.
Thank you very much. After Ron, we will have Kevin Cotter.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity to stand before you today. My name is Ron Roman. I'm the district rep for operating engineers, local number three, with an office right here in Uba City. And I'm not gonna ask anybody to stand up, but if you just look around the room, I think you can see it without anyone having to stand up. We represent approximately 110 people out there at Recology that work out there every day, okay? Approximately 42 of those people live right here in the city. That's a pretty large percentage of the entire company that lives and works right here. Those dollars come home right here, they're spent right here, they're active in their communities, they participate. They were talking about culture earlier. I think you don't have to look very far to see the type of culture that Recology's bu, excuse me, built in this community. Everywhere you look, it's positive. I've never seen anything negative that was said earlier tonight. I have not heard of anything negative from the employees, or the employers, or the customers about this company. So, I too, on behalf of all these yellow shirts in here and the 70 or 80 others that couldn't make it tonight because they're up at 2:00 in the morning to go out there and do this job, I strongly recommend and hope that you would go back and negotiate first with Recology, as everybody suggested, and then come back if it does not work out, and go off and do something different. But I would suggest and hope that today, that you do look at Recology first and then go forward from there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. After Kevin, it's Kelly Sheeran.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name's Kevin Cotter. I'm the co-founder of Newworth Market, and I have another commercial business here in town. I was born, and I had the privilege of being born and raised in this community. I love this community. I'm gonna tell you something. In my business, I am the biggest disruptor in my business. I've surrounded myself, however, in recent years with very good employees, professionals, and vendors that I trust to tell me when I'm wrong. So, I'm asking the city council to listen to this community, to listen to the staff, to listen to the recommendation to negotiate. Recology has a transfer station in place, they have the landfill, neither one are capacity. And again, I have no relation with Recology, except they do a very good job, and I can assure you, having a business in Chico as well known with waste management, Recology does very well for this community. I've learned not to push a rope in my business. That's been one thing that's come from surrounding myself with quality people. I don't want to be the salmon that swims upstream that ultimately dies because I had such a good idea that I thought was a good idea when no one else agreed with me, when I shouldn't have ever swam upstream in the first place. I would encourage this council to look through a different window. Look at this room. Listen to your constituents. What's the harm in negotiating? Doesn't work out, go to bid. But what's the harm? Why do we want to send $67,000 on a salmon that's gonna go upstream and die anyway? That's my two cents.
After Kelly, we have Mike Leggins.
Good morning. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I'm Kelly Sheeran. I'm a resident of Uba City and part-owner at Give a Key Ford. I'm speaking on behalf of myself and the Give a Key family. To the Give a Key family, Recology is about community. It's about spaghetti dinners, pink toaters, countless employee volunteer hours, and employee owners that live, eat, and shop in our community. The fact that they just pick up our garbage is the cherry on top for us. They provide an excellent service for a reasonable price. They deserve to make a profit. In speaking with fellow community members and leaders, there's no question that Recology should be the top prospect to continue our trash service. They're an integral, integral part of our community. Please alter your position and renegotiate with Recology. Thank you.
Thank you. Then after Mike Leggins is going to be Jackie Selman.
Evening, Mike. Mayor Cleveland, Vice Mayor Dittball, and honorable council members, I'm Mike Leggins, general manager of Recology Uba Sutter, and also a Uba City resident. I'm here tonight representing the 135 employee owners of Recology Uba Sutter. We, along with our predecessors, have provided service here for 42 years. During that time, we have never once taken it for granted. Instead, we've been excellent corporate partners, we've provided high-quality and innovative services, and that's been verified by third-party studies over the last three or four years. We respect and appreciate the partnership with the city of Uba City, and we would like to see it continue well into the future. I'm here not to stop the process to go out to RFP. I'm simply here tonight just to ask that the RFP not be the first action choice. I ask tonight that you vote for the alternative provided in your staff report to select the alternate of your previous, to alter the previous direction and conduct negotiations with us, Recology. Now, over a couple other points, and this will be quick, there's been mention about the transfer station where it's located. Our existing Marysville Transfer Station facility is not in jeopardy and has 20-plus years of useful life remaining. And you, and you know now, there's really no easy place to put a transfer station in Uba City or Sutter County. The site, the new transfer station, and even if there was one, the environmental process and community concern make it difficult. I know you've, I won't go into the process that you've, that's led you here, but I respectfully request you to consider the alternate provided in your staff report to alter your previous direction and start negotiations with Recology. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. After Jackie is John Morrison.
Good evening, Mayor Cleveland, Vice Mayor Dittball, and honorable council members. My name is Jackie Selman. My husband and I have been Uba City residents for 35 years, and I live at 1964 Cherry Street in Uba City. We also own the upholstery hut on 516 Second Street for about 40 years, and I've been the community outreach manager for Recology Uba Sutter for the past 17 years. So, I'm here tonight as a resident, a business owner, and on behalf of myself and 135 employee owners. So, cities and counties primarily do go out to bid because they're unsatisfied with the service or the cost. And I have attended those nine council, board, and community public meetings throughout the region that were provided by consultants Sloan-Vasquez and McAfee, who were hired by the Regional Waste Management Authority, and I can tell you, I didn't hear one complaint from the residents on either service or price. So, the employee owners of Uba Sutter, I feel, have earned the right to at least negotiate first for services. We've built in the 40-plus years many, many partnerships, and I see some here tonight, and we cherish our partnership with the city of Uba City. I live here, I raised my son here, I work here. We all, as employee owners, give back many hours, not because we have to, because we want to. So, please reconsider, go to alternative number three on your staff report, and conduct negotiations with Recology Uba Sutter, and we hope and look forward to an ongoing positive partnership for many years to come. Thank you.
I'm after John Morrison. It's Rory Ramirez.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilman.
Good to be here.
This is my first time here. This is a great process. I'm kind of excited about this. I've done some voting and some campaigning, but I've never been part of this. This is great. I'm gonna go a little softer and touchier than my buddy John Cassidy did tonight. I think we'll have a bottle of wine next time we come here, right before, and then come down. I am gonna kind of hit on the touchy-feely side. I'm looking out here at the men and women in yellow, and these people, employee owners, have done a great job in safety in our community. So, there is the cost and every, all the little things that have been talked about tonight, but one of the things we've not talked about is the safety that these men and women provide us. I'm very concerned about that, you know, being here for five generations in Sutter County, been around here for a while. So, I want to consider that at all times, too. They've done a wonderful job over in Marysville, keeping everything contained. Love these guys, and I want to finish out with shop local, and this is local. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Rory. And after that, and not sure if, it looks like Mark Mulliner.
Good evening, excuse me, Mayor Cleveland.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Dittball, and fellow council members. My name is Rory Ramirez. I reside at 1657 Greenwood Way, excuse my voice. Yuba City, California, and I am going to ask everyone to please, at the end of my comments, no standing ovations. I don't want to cause any issues for the mayor or anyone else in the audience. Standing here with me is former Mayor Bob Barkhouse, and former Mayor Karen Cardiselli was supposed to be with us here as well, and I'm gonna speak on behalf of the three of us. Really, everything has been said that needs to be said in terms of options that this council has. What I want to touch on a little bit is discretionary authority and the process that you use, and how and when you use that discretionary authority. This particular item allows you to do that. And so, while for me, it's a struggle to see why, when you look at all of the vetted data that we have all paid a lot of money for, six jurisdictions in this region have paid for experts to tell us, to tell our electeds whether or not we are getting a fair deal, we are getting quality service. You've heard all of the comments related to that. So for the purpose of my points, I'm gonna, under the background on staff report, they talk about options one and two, which is to extend the term of the current agreement with Recology, or renegotiate the existing agreement with Recology. I'm gonna combine that into one option, because they're not mutually exclusive. If you decide to take advantage of the opportunity tonight, and go to alternative three, and first enter into negotiations with Recology, you got option one, which if you choose that, does not take any other options off the table. All other options going out for an RFP process are still in play. But if you stay the course you're on, and you stay with option two, going out for RFPs, you eliminate the options within number one. Now, you've set a precedent to this, interestingly enough, that you have the ability and you have the will to do it. You did it tonight. You had on the consent calendar, item number fourteen, renewal of contract, recommendation, adopt a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute an updated agreement with ICMA-RC to administer the city's four fifty-seven B deferred compensation plan. If you read staff's report on that item, and their recommendation, it has all of the elements of what you were talking about here. It was a sole source agreement. It was an updated contract. It involves millions of dollars in terms of retirees' money, plus the same firm handles medical for you as well under a separate contract. So it's not like, and no one on the council, when this item was brought up under the consent calendar, no one spoke up, no one from the public spoke up, there was no discussion on a process that we are asking you to consider when it comes to your current service provider for solid waste management. That's the end of my comments. Take any questions, or Mayor? Anything you want to say? Please.
No, I just want to say, if it ain't broke, don't replace it, and don't try to repair it.
A man of few words right there, Mayor Barkhouse. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, after, I guess it is Mark. It almost looks like Mac, but it looks like Mark, and Bill Lloyd.
I'm a welder, not a speller.
Well, it's, it's better, it's better printing than mine, I'll give you that.
My name is Mark Mulliner. I'm Business Manager, Plumbers and Pipe Fitters, Local Two-Two Eight, Yuba City. I'm here, it's an honor to be here, speaking with a few council members and council. I have to say that it's disappointing to be here in this capacity. I would much rather be here under different capacity. Understanding that you have an opportunity to put something out to bid is because you're dissatisfied with what you had. If you were dissatisfied, if your constituents are dissatisfied, if you have complaints, if there's multiple issues with costs, if the third-party consultant said that they're within the margins of error, then sit down and negotiate with them. They've earned it. This is their community. They live here. They pay good wages. They're a union contractor. Their people are gonna retire and not be a burden on society. This is, everything is lined up here with this company, and Recology and its employees, that if you want to go out to bid to get the best deal, the best deal's not always the cheapest deal. Over here at the courthouse, contractor RNS went out of business. They were the low bidder on the job. Out of business, bankrupt. They weren't the best company to do the job. And here we have an opportunity. We know that Recology, and I don't represent Recology, I'm an ally. I represent workers and union members. And I can tell you that if you haven't sat down to at least discuss and negotiate what might be a better deal before going out to the unknown, the unknown person or contractor, I don't know the company, I don't know them from Adam, but I don't know that they're gonna do what the company you have does, if they're gonna do the things for the community, the things for everyone that lives here. And all I can say is, is why would you want to change horses in the middle of the race? Why would you want to just stop, if the horse is still breathing and pulling the cart, why do you want to change it out? You know? And if it ain't broke, he stole my line. Don't fix it. Thank you.
Thank you. After Bill Lloyd, it's Lisa Avila. Or Avila, however you want to.
Thanks for the chance to speak tonight. I just want to say that as a private citizen, I think that competition brings out the best in all businesses, and I think this is a chance to see what's out there. What else will we have, the options that we have? So I'm in the support of the proposition tonight to retain the Vasquez-Sloan, I'm sorry, Sloan-Vasquez-Macafee for the RFP, and that we move forward and see what exactly is out there that we have that is the options. Thank you.
Thank you. After Lisa, we have Dave Vaughn. There were so many that were after you, I couldn't, I couldn't hold it. Sorry, Dave.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council members. Over the past several months, we've spent a lot of time in this community, getting to know the people and getting to know the organizations who make up this community. And I can tell you that I really appreciate the passion in this room, and that's because in the cities that we service, our customers and employees feel the same way. We've made friends, and we've gained a better understanding of what this community wants and needs, and how we can benefit it. We're very involved in the communities that we service, supporting their events and their nonprofit organizations, and engaging in boards and committees where we can share our management expertise. We offer services that go above and beyond the services, the normal services that you would expect from a provider. We partner with community leaders to support the direction and goals of the city. We would like the opportunity to propose a program for Yuba City to benefit the city and its ratepayers. It's for these reasons that we ask that you agree to enter into a consulting agreement with Sloan Vasquez and McAfee. I'm sorry, you guys.
Me too.
To produce and manage a fair RFP for this city. Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. After Dave Vaughn, we have Scott Kuhn.
Joe, how many times is your name gonna be messed up tonight?
I'm sorry. Well, I don't know. You don't need it. We just have trouble with it.
Hey, Joe, SVM.
It's all, it's all us.
Good evening, members, Mr. Mayor, members of council. My name is Dave Vaughn. My family and I live at seven thirty-two East Hillcrest Avenue. I'm proud to be an employee owner of Recology, and I also serve as the company's Vice President and Senior Director of Operations. I stand here tonight on behalf of the employee owners to thank you for the opportunity to provide services in the city of Yuba City and the Yuba Sutter area. We're very proud of the services we provide. We're very proud of the impact that we have in our community partnership, and we thank you for that opportunity. I'm gonna be sweet, short and sweet tonight. I ask that council approve alternate three in the staff report to enter into sole source negotiations with Recology. For the record, Recology stands ready, willing, and able to enter into good negotiations promptly. I'm happy to answer any questions, and happy to come back if necessary. Thank you.
Thank you. After Scott, Johnnyce Downs.
Mayor Cleveland, and other members of the council, and also this August, most August group here. My name is Scott Kuhn from Recycling Industries, and I've been in business in this community, and I'm not gonna tell you how long. There's been a lot of talk about age and how long they've lived here and been here, so we won't get into that, because I need to be as brief as possible. First of all, I want to thank the council for the wisdom and the consideration that you went through before you made your decision to put this out to bid, and to ultimately negotiate with the consultant for the RFP. Bringing to mind just a few things that are gonna result of this decision that you've made, is that, first of all, since I was a teenager, and that's been a while, you're gonna have the opportunity through the, through the transfer station that we're putting in here, you're gonna have, all the residents in this area are gonna have the opportunity to self-haul what waste they have, and not have to drive twenty to twenty-five miles practically to haul wood to do it. You're also gonna find, although it's been objected to, you're gonna find that the citizens of Yuba City and Yuba City in this area are gonna have much lower rates than what they have to pay at the present time. We already did a study on that. The second of all, you're gonna find that because of this transfer station, that the city will now receive host fees, which they have not received for many years, because the host fees have all gone to Marysville, because that's where the garbage is dumped. We estimate through this transfer station that we put in, those host fees will be around three hundred thousand dollars a year at this particular point. We've seen the costs for, for various pieces of equipment that was needed, and that three hundred thousand each year will go towards paying things like that. One of the final things is that the time, it's time for this. It's already been mentioned by one young man here that competitive bidding is the way things are done. We're rebuilding this bridge from Yuba City to Marysville. That was competitive bidding. Virtually everything we do in the city is competitive bidding. It's the best way to get the best price. And the time is right for us to do that, because this is the first time in over forty years this contract will be put out to competitive bidding. A lot has been said about Recology and the great job they're doing, and I have nothing against Recology. I think you probably have done a good job in all of that. And the beauty of this whole thing is that now, Recology will have the opportunity to bid on this contract, just like everyone else, and see where they stand. Thank you very much for your time.
Absolutely. Thank you. After Johnnyce, it's Tony Sinca. I think I have that right.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Johnnyce Downs. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I am with Republic Services, and Republic Services is one of the largest waste and recycling companies in the nation. We've been recognized nationally for our waste and recycle programs, and over thirteen million customers across the state and across the country rely on Republic Services. But that's us in a big global picture. Who we are, and what really tells our stories, our story is who we are in our communities that we serve. We provide exclusive residential service for Citrus Heights, Rancho Cordova, and Elk Grove, and in those communities, we're engaged in Rotary, all kinds of local organizations, and we get involved. We spent upwards of five hundred thousand dollars in services and sponsorships and community support just last year. And while that's a big number, what's even bigger is what we actually do in our communities. We're in our communities hands-on, and in fact, I gave a report that over a six-week period, we had volunteered, been engaged in, and supported in person, hands-on, over sixty events in like a six-week period, which I still don't know how we did that. But that's who we are as a company. That's how we get involved in our communities. So when you look at impeccable service, we provide that. If you look at engagement and involvement in our communities, we're there. Monetary support, we give monetarily and in person and physical. So I think this is a tremendous opportunity for the City Council right now to look at, you know, what options you have before us, before you, and we support and really encourage you to move forward with the RFP process. So I respectfully ask you to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Tony, you're carrying the tail.
Good evening, Mayor and Yuba City Council members. I'm Tony Sinca, General Manager with Republic Services. You know, I see a lot of great employees in the room tonight, and I just want to point out that, you know, y'all sound like you do a great job here, and we would look to, you know, if we were to bid on the contract and get it, we would look to keep the same workforce as there is now, right? I mean, y'all are the experts. You know, I could tell by all the positive comments tonight that you do a great job. But with that being said, you know, we also do a great job. We service, we have multiple franchise agreements in Northern California. Out of Sacramento, we run, we have franchise agreements at Citrus Heights, Rancho Cordova, and Elk Grove, and I could tell you a lot of the comments here tonight are similar to the comments that we receive in our cities. Also, in looking at, you know, our franchise agreements in comparison to some of the services y'all get, I think this could be an opportunity for us to give you a proposal and, you know, offer some expanded services on top of some of the great things you have right now. So, you know, I just ask that you continue the process, and I humbly request that we be part of it. So, thank you very much, and good night.
Okay, now with that, I do have three letters that we did receive, two of them from actually out of the area that are council members of, one of them of Rancho Cordova, in support of going out to bid, then also another council member from Elk Grove, and then also members of Yuba City that have sent a letter saying that they would like us to continue and go into a negotiation. So these are three letters that are going into the record, has been received. Now with that, first of all, I would like ask our city manager if there are any clarifications that need to be brought forth with some inaccuracies, if there are any, or just some clarifications that you would prefer to respond to. Normally, we don't, but.
Mr. Mayor, if there's anything of your council that jumped out as you, I mean, there's a lot said over the course, a lot of public testimony.
For me, it's mostly the number and the dollar value that keeps being tossed out that we, as Yuba City, spent.
Well, a couple things. One is the proposal is roughly sixty, six, sixty-seven thousand dollars. That, specific to that number, that can be included and is part of the proposal to be covered, that cost covered by the successful proposer. So that's that issue. The other is the number that I don't know the exact certain number, but I have written down a hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars that was spent by the Regional Waste Management Authority, of which we are a member, and that was the initial study.
Pardon me? A shared cost.
Cost, with the other jurisdictions, with the other six jurisdictions. That is one, the study that was done for the analysis, the initial analysis to come forward with the recommendation, and these are recommendations of staff, and I don't expect you'll always agree with me. I expect, hopefully, the majority of the time you will, otherwise you need to replace me. And that was the one where the council decided to go to the negotiation, pardon me, bypass the negotiations, and go to the competitive bidding process. I do not have the information before me to refute that number. Keith Martin, rather, as the exec for the Regional Waste Management Authority, controlled that process.
What would be the estimated cost of a negotiated process we would have put out, no matter what, through this whole thing?
Well, I could certainly ask Mr. Sloan for that number. The, you have, the city of Yuba City is a, at least ten million dollars of the contract, the current contract total. So. So you need to look at your council and what philosophically the direction you head in. What I don't want you to do is get too hung up on the dollar amount. Because on a $10 million contract hypothetically, if you could save 1%, that's $100,000. So it begins to proportionally dwarf the dollar amounts. Are you willing to make a certain dollar investment in order to save money on the back end? So whether it be, I would expect it would be less for a negotiation process, okay? But it's, it's ultimately the goal of your council and the outcome you desire that should be driving that, not the investment upfront.
Okay. The, the dollar amount was the number one thing that actually stood out to me. As, just kind of wondering where, whether it was us, as it was said, or as a group, the split up and the sharing of that.
And I'll, I'll clarify based on that comment, one other thing. I mean, it was a comment from my fellow administrators, quite frankly, that your council decided to go in one direction, five other jurisdictions went in another. You reserve that right to make that decision on behalf of Yuba City. It could have been 3-3, it could have been 4-2, it could have been any mix of, of, of numbers in there. Your council was one of the first decision makers in what direction to go in. You weren't the last, so it wasn't as if five went in one direction and you went in a different direction. So given the fact you're on the front end, it's, you can frame it because that was the outcome that you're going it alone, but it wasn't one of the objectives of the council when you, when you stated that. So just want to remind that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then I, I would expect that there may be some questions for clarification that may come up in the conversation that we are going to have now amongst ourselves in public.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any, I see a light on right down there. Councilman Harris, your light's on. Do you have some comments? That's usually how I go by it, is by watching the lights go on.
It is on. I'll remember that.
I go by the lights, that's all I can do.
I can start by, I guess, comment. Do we, would it be appropriate to continue the vote on the 66,000 first and then move forward? Because I'm not, what I'm commenting on is not necessarily about the $66,000 we're going to spend.
Pardon me. Traditionally, your council has, has taken this opportunity to ask any questions you have regarding any of the subject matters. Jermaine, to the staff report.
Okay, well, I have, I have no questions. I do have a few things to say when it ever appropriate. Go ahead. All right. All right. I'm not stalling, I'm just trying to be proper here. We've heard a lot of folks talk, and forgive me, I can't see very well past the first row. I'm sure there's a lot of people out there, I know, but. A lot of talk today. I see a lot of yellow out there. I don't think it's, it's kind of a little bit deja vu because we're going, we, no secret where I voted the first time. After talking to a lot of people, a lot of people, since that vote was made. And then today, looking into your eyes, hearing people speak from the heart, getting a little drama. Don't worry, John, the Oscar's in the mail. It's, it's a passion issue and I understand that. I completely understand that. We, we understand that. It's, it's inflammatory, it's a big deal, it's a lot of money. It's people's careers and livelihood. But I think especially up to today, we've heard from a lot of people, from all parts of our community, prominent people, educated people, knowledgeable people, people around for, for decades and decades. And I remain of the opinion that we have a known entity who has done a good job, whatever that entity may be. It's not about a specific company name. It's the way I look at it, I kind of zoom out a little bit, try to get away from all the emotion. And look at it kind of a business thing. We have $66,000, some may possibly even a little north of that, that we're going to spend. Do we really need to leapfrog beyond the option of negotiating? Right? And eliminate all those, someone mentioned eliminating all those other options, just in principle. We have a known entity, they're doing a good job, we're happy with them. It just makes good business sense to give them a shot, see if it works out, and then move on. If it doesn't, we still have the opportunity to go out to bid. It's my opinion. So I could go on, but you know, I, I won't. I'm turning my light off now.
So Manny, do you have any comments you want to make?
It's going to be short and sweet. I totally agree with what Councilman Harris just said. I've lived here for 60 years in the community, worked for several businesses. Recology does wonderful work. They're community, one of the top community leaders. Like we've said several times, if it's broken, you know, we don't need to, we don't need to fix it, so. Huh? If it's not broken, excuse me, yeah, if it's broken, yeah. Get it right, yeah, if it's not broken. If it's broken, yes. But anyway, so you know how I...
I'm getting used to this.
Yes, I am.
And it is, it actually is tough. Just try it sometime.
Yeah. So anyway, I totally agree with Councilman Harris. So we'll just see what happens here in the close future. Thank you.
Now, I don't know who to throw the coin up between the two here because... I'll go with John. In honor of the Vice Mayor position.
I would have expected you to do that.
I, and I considered that. I, I have actually learned something.
Recology is a remarkable service provider in our area. That's not what is at question. The employee's integrity is not at question. The level of service, the type of service is certainly not part of what the conversation is tonight. I've heard a lot of comments from the public from the past and tonight that really haven't changed tremendously over the course of time. One of the big questions is, if they're doing a great job, why go out to bid? There was a comment tonight and, and I try to write these down as, as best I can so I can respond to them, but is going it alone a benefit to the city? Well, you heard when the city made their decision to go it alone wasn't on the tail end of, of a decision. We have been negotiating and have had contracts with Recology for, well, since the beginning of Recology, back to NorCal, back to all of the other names that have preceded Recology in this business. One thing that has been absent is a competitive bid. At no time has this ever gone out to a public process and a competitive bid. Joe Sloan came to us just months ago with a recommendation and, and Mr. Jimmerson, you were quite correct. He said something along the lines, we ought to go through, just negotiating with him, if that doesn't work out, let's go out to a bid. And he actually chastised the council for a decision that they made. But I throw back at Joe Sloan the very same comment that he made in front of this council, not the same individuals here, in 2011, that the way to get the best services and the best prices was to go to competitive bid and they will sharpen their pencils. He said that. I took him at his word. I believe that that is the process that the public expects of their government or a representative body of government to protect ratepayers in the future. When we buy a car for the city of Yuba City, we go to a competitive bid process. We even edge our bids here by 1%. The city's take on sales tax to try to keep that bid local. The majority of the vehicles that we purchase are now local bids because of the, of the position that this council's taken in the past to edge those bids. If we didn't go out to bid, we could select any truck we wanted. What's good for us? It's not broke, don't fix it. Well, what kind of vehicle is going to service the best? Is it going to be a Ford? Is it going to be a Chevy? Is it going to be a Dodge? Am I going to get it from Sacramento, Roseville, Woodland? Calusa? Or am I going to try to get it right here in Yuba City? Competitive, the competitive bid process, let me give you one of our recent examples. We went out to bid. Six bidders came back on a major project. The estimate, the engineer's estimate to build this project in Yuba City was $55 million. $55 million. Competitive bid process, all bridge builders. Every one of them are professional bridge builders. The bid spread was $40 million. That should be shocking to everybody in this room. It shocked me. The low bidder was pushed out by the second bid, which was six or seven million dollars more than the low bid. Was pushed out because of irregularities. We're back out to bid, folks, and we're doing that for this community. We are not going to spend or expect our citizens or our ratepayers to spend money they don't have to for services. It's not apples and oranges all the time. In waste management, it can be. That's why an RFP is the most productive process to be able to develop exactly what the service is. I would expect the hometown team to prevail. They have the home court advantage. They're playing on their football field. They know their hoop, the bend on the, on the rim, whatever you want to call it. They know the game here. They ought to build to be the successful bidder. But when I hear they may not bid, that the hometown team may not bid because that's what they did in Vacaville, then I look at the rates in Vacaville. A three-yard container for commercial is $395.81 for a one-time per week pickup. The newest contract in Chico, California, for a three-yard container, one-week pickup is $138.03. The same company has those contracts. Does a competitive bid process work? Did in Chico. It did in Chico. Going to my other page of notes. Some of them are kind of redundant, so I'm not going to go through all of that. I think a lot of the answers were, were made, the, the money going over to Sloan-Vasquez and McAfee, that can be rolled into, into an RFP down the road, can be into an agreement. It's not wasted money. It's money for the ratepayers. That's the individuals that I'm the most concerned about. If we went to a process, as many have advocated, to going to option number three, that's going behind closed doors, folks, keeping it away from the public and coming to an agreement. Who wants government going behind doors to come up with prices in an agreement that will carry on for years to come? I say level the playing field. The playing field needs to be brought to that, to the, to the home team. The visitors can come in, let's see what happens. But I also believe the words of Joe Sloan from the past, the other Joe Sloan from 2011, they'll sharpen their pencil, okay? We will have an agreement that will be better, that'll be better suited for this community and it won't have some ongoing aggravations that I've even had discussions with some of the management teams in the past.
You're done.
I'm done.
Hey, turn your light off. There you go. No, I know his, I know his brain. It's still going like crazy, but he decided that that was it. Vice Mayor?
Okay. First of all, I just want to say that Recology is an amazing, amazing business here. Amazing community partners. I have nothing negative to say about Recology, but I strongly do believe in competitive bidding. I've been with the state for almost 20 years. I was a contract manager for many years and there's not anything that we did within the state that wasn't competitive bid. So going back on, on some of the takes that John's already taken, I won't repeat them, but I'm just as far as competitive. Yeah, I got my notes too. Competitive bidding provides any good or service companies to submit that bid. You all know that. And this provides transparency. That was one of the takes that he was saying at the end. It is complete transparency to the community of what is happening, what is going on, what are the discussions? It's an open discussion. Any of the other events that take place are behind closed doors. And our community, our ratepayers deserve that open transparency, understanding what's happening, what is the conversation, and where, where we are taking this. One of the other things with competitive bidding, it introduces new suppliers that we may not be aware of. We've been in contract with Recology for over 40 years. Great service, but you know what? Over 40 years, lots of things change. Way work is done changes. If we are continuously working with the same company and there are other suppliers out there that can provide us the same service or enhanced service that we don't know about, how can we say that we did our due diligence to really seek out the best? And that, and that's our job. That, that's what we're here for. We're here to serve the community. And my, my dedication is to the community and to make sure that I am doing everything that I can along with the rest of the city council, that we're doing our job to provide the best. And if I don't have all the information in front of me, I can't make that decision. So without that competitive bidding, I don't know what I'm looking at other than one supplier, period. The potential of reducing contract costs or the increase of the scope of work can also be offered through competitive bidding. Competitive bidding is a legitimate and effective way to obtain services at a lower cost or a, or an enhanced way of service as well by stimulating competition. We all know what that is. How many of us go, you know, purchase a home? How many homes do we look at before we make a decision? Cars, refrigerators, you name it, everything, we look at different options before we make that final purchase. And that's what we need to look at when we look at our services within the community. And I believe in competitive bidding. I think we need to go move forward in that direction and, and hopefully we'll, we'll see what comes up.
First of all, I would like to thank the supporters of both sides that have arrived here tonight. This is our American process. This is what is so fantastic about America, where we can get together without throwing things at each other, throwing chairs and getting in fistfights and stuff, hopefully. If you've seen on the news, sometimes in Japan and sometimes in cities in Europe, they're actually, in China, man, they're fisticuffs. I mean, they're going at it. Oh, okay. But that's common there in other countries and it's, it's great that we have a community here that is actually very civil. And I'm very pleased with the participation tonight from, from everyone. First of all, I would like to make note for people that, man, I'm getting dry. No, that's my decision. I don't think so this time. It all has been said. Thank you. I very, very strongly considered it. Okay. One of the, one of the items that I would really like to point out is if you had read the agenda item, you would see how the RFP or the, uh, bidding is gonna be weighted and designed, um, for, for, uh, evaluation categories. Uh, experience references, twenty percent. Customer service, twenty percent. Programs and services, twenty-five percent. Price proposal, twenty-five percent. It's not about price as much as it is everything else. It also has responsiveness to RFP pass or fail. So also, legal and regulatory disclosures, all those things would be noted. Financial information and requirements. Materiality of, uh, exceptions to draft agreement and options, all noted. It's not all about price, as some people have tried to, um, uh, make it sound. It's very weighted towards all of the customer service side and the community. So, it is not, just wanna make that clear, that it's, it's not about, totally about the price. Um, I received virtually no communication once our policy was decided of the way to go from, um, our current provider. There was little. I did reach out once to, uh, in a phone call and said, if you have any comments and wanna meet with me or whatever, I did that one time. I got no response, and this is a few months ago. So I just, okay, it's up to them to decide to come, call and talk to me. Um, until about three weeks ago, uh, the official, um, found out that, uh, was gonna be pushed by a member of the community was going to be pushing hard on, uh, on this item. Um, which is actually the one that gave me the most information that actually supports my position. So that's kind of odd. Only, the only other real questioning on the RFP process or the bit, uh, competitive bidding open, I'm gonna call transparent, was from an elected from another city who tried to ridicule me and bully me and berate me. You don't do that to another elected. Okay? They thought that I was the ringleader uh, of this whole thing, and anybody that actually knows me, I'm the first one that is going to say, let's look at all the sides and make the decision with the most balanced. I drive myself crazy trying to sometimes find the right position and, and almost overlook things. Uh, because of past experiences in my life, I found that it may be hard on me, but it's the best for the community to do that. So, um, that official makes decisions for their community. They do not make decisions for my community. And so, um, there were two or three others that, um, uh, did not have defined, um, opposition to the process. They just didn't understand what was being said in the community, uh, the difference between, uh, negotiations and an R, um, or a bidding, open bidding process and competitive. Once, uh, the discussion and description was given, um, I just said, you make up your mind. I mean, which would you would want? I left it completely in their lap. Didn't try to push them in any direction on that. I won't say that comment. There was, um, some raised, uh, by, uh, previous, uh, mayors. Thank you for being here and being interested still in our community. Um, the decisions you made. Um, I'd look back and advise uh, Mayor Barkhouse, uh, for the past. Uh, Mr. Ramirez, as I guess, left, uh, wasn't happy with my, uh, decision. I must say that you two did not have the opportunity to have a large, competitive, responsible company that was interested in our community and our economy to scale. We're now of a size with their interest. And so, I can't say as to whether you would have gone any of the directions based upon, if you were in there, that, you know, where would you have gone? I don't know. I have to go with what I have. And this is the, a very responsible company nationwide and very competitive. In fact, they compete all over the state of California with all the different providers of services, including um, Half Moon Bay, where, um, our current provider actually took the opposite side of the story and they wanted the RFP process and Half Moon Bay did not. And, uh, Recology prevailed, went to a, uh, competitive process and, um, Republic prevailed. They were in the driver's seat and they prevailed, even into that process. So it comes from both sides. It all depends on who wants to come in and who wants to, uh, try to compete. It's, it's the industry. It's the industry norm to compete against each other. And so, um, it happens all the time. Yes, we do have discretion on franchise types of businesses. This is a franchise. One of the reasons that was given is because in some communities, there is no, there are no competitive companies. There's one that shows up. And according to state law, if it's over a certain amount, you're supposed to have a competitive process. So you turn it into a franchise, you turn it into a special service, and then they're permitted to go single-source and do contracts with them. That is one of the purposes of that. So, one size does not fit all. And when your size gets to a certain size that you move into a, a whole new basket, uh, the world changes. State of California has requirements on, on, on cities. When Uba City or Sutter County reaches a hundred thousand, whole bunch of laws change. And we have to operate our government in a different manner, that threshold when it hits. Um, and there's many other things that are designed that way within the state of California. So it isn't one size fits all, one direction. And, uh, so when conditions change, you have to go back and reconsider the direction you're headed and why. That's eight years at the county, um, working with state issues and federal issues, um, and dealing and talking with some people that are much smarter than me. I've tried to take and glean what they have told me and put it together in the best picture that I could, and I operate with their knowledge and hopefully I can, um, apply it properly. So, there is some discretion and that's under special conditions that usually that is taken. Uh, and then we have to decide when that is to be done as a team.
With all due respect, I don't mean to interrupt your, your, uh, your discussion.
If I am incorrect on something, go ahead.
I'm not, I'm not here to correct that. I'm here to send the Recology drivers on. They have an hour rest period required. They start early. So they've been very patient. I asked them to stay till seven fifteen. They've stayed till eight o'clock. So with that, ladies and gentlemen, from Recology, thank you guys so much for being here. We'll update you guys on the.
For government regulation and it's a good reason for that, so.
Federal regulation.
Oh, that's the federal one? Okay.
Thank you.
It's government. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you, guys. Drive safe.
Good job, Dave.
Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Yes, you bet. No, all I have is one more. I guess I'm gonna be redundant upon with the two here on, on some things here, on this last comment. Uh, I went back and I tried to reconcile my, uh, my understanding of the processes of, uh, negotiation and going out to, uh, open, uh, bid. And just go back over again. In fact, today I did it again and wrote down, uh, as I see those two processes. Uh, negotiation avoids community involvement and open dialogue with the unelecteds and electeds making policy and decisions on spending taxpayers' money. That's a little, a little bit, um, loose on that, but it's, it's just a, a abbreviation. The benefits of that are as there's no politics, no controversy, easy on government staff, administration. It's easy on the, uh, general community and they are uninformed and basically everything's kept quiet. I understand that. And that was one of the comments that was made, uh, during, uh, by, I won't say it that way. Comments made during the policy decision meeting early in the year is that, um, if we didn't go with the negotiation, uh, it would avoid, um, um, friction and strife in the community. And that was one of the reasons that was given to negotiate. Sorry, that's not legitimate. That is not a legitimate reason for us to, uh, to not go to negotiate. For us to turn tail and go, wah, I don't wanna get controversy. I wouldn't be in this position. Actually, I'd rather be a private citizen and not even be, have done this in my life. But I felt it was important when I saw the leadership doing what I am saying I can't do. And then, uh, with the bidding process, it's a completely open and transparent process where the citizens can get involved with the process of where, how their tax money is spent. It can be very political. It could be much more controversial, difficult for staff and administration. Could be a lot of noise by well-informed citizen, a, a lot of noise, excuse me. And then it is, uh, also by well-informed citizens and general public can be also a lot of noise on both sides of the story. I personally believe that the prior comment based upon it's a quite much quieter process is one of the reasons that the staff of other agencies did not wanna go, uh, with a, um, competitive bid. It's easier on them. They have tough times. They don't have the staff. I hear that all the time. Don't bring anything before me that's gonna give me more work or whatever like that. I used to get that all the time at the county. Not much here because I ignore that comment. Um, I just say it's necessary at least to look into it, and if you give me the, you know, information that satisfies it, fine, I'll, I'll forego. But, um, yeah, that's taking a little swipe out there, but that's inherent in government. They want to have an easier life overall. And it's up to the policymakers to decide whether, um, that is a valid concern by their part or the overriding concern for the taxpayers and their spending of their money overrides um, that concern of theirs. We have a viable company that wants to come in. They have been very strong and vocal that wanna compete. We cannot deny that. That's just wrong. If it was a small company or somebody that had no business being in competition like that, couldn't fulfill it, I would say, no, let's go to negotiations like I did at the county. Did that twice. There was nobody there. We said, let's negotiate. It's a different time now, and I think we need to move forward with, um, moving with the, um, recommended, uh, agenda item. With that, I'm finished. Um, now I'd like to bring it back to the council, get back, uh, on course with the actual agenda item as, um, uh, presented. And if there's any, uh, concerns or comments on the actual agenda item itself, the costs or, um, timing where that they would like to, with their, uh, timeline that they have, uh, please, uh, bring them up now. Yes?
Mr. Mayor, um, I'd like to, I need to make a motion. And I think I would ask that we continue this momentarily on this agenda item. The vote on this.
Okay, there's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there any discussion as to, uh, on that item?
On that, what I would like to do, Mr. Mayor, is make a motion, um, excuse me, my laptop.
So you already have, you already have a motion?
I'm going, what I'm gonna do.
Are you gonna be more specific?
My motion is to continue this agenda item on, on the vote for the sixty-six thousand momentarily.
Um, that is your motion?
And he, may I second it?
May I second it? Okay, I'm gonna call, uh, vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. Wait a minute. What is he trying to?
Well, that's why I'd like to know why we're delaying.
Why are we delaying it? Yes. You have to have a.
We, this is gonna, this, uh, agenda item number eighteen is gonna be closed as soon as we're, we're about to vote. Is that correct?
Right, but you have to have a reason why to postpone it or, um,
to make a.
To have staff go back and what?
My goal here, my goal here is to move, make a motion that we go with alternative number three.
Okay, that is your motion.
That's my goal.
That is the, that is the real, uh, the real motion.
For my sake.
Okay, that's the real motion.
Need to continue vote.
Anything I need to correct on that?
Mr. Harris, so, so you rescinded your motion to continue the matter, rather you're making a motion to go with alternative three.
Yes, but I, that is correct. However, I, I wanted to make sure that we did not disregard the agenda item on, on the table. So we postponed it for about thirty seconds so we can make this motion first and then come back.
No, you don't, you don't need, you don't, you don't need to.
You don't need to do that.
You don't need to continue the matter. You just make the motion. To make it clear, make the motion, I think your intent is to go with, uh, make a motion to go with alternative three. Is that your motion? I think that's your intent.
So I need a second for that.
You, let's make sure Mr. Harris has Mr. Harris's.
That is, that is correct, and forgive me if I went out of turn here.
No, that's okay. That's okay. That, so that's your motion, and now we need a second.
We have a second on, uh, alternative three.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. All in favor of, let me get it right here. I'm gonna make sure I have it right. On the background, prepare and release request, propose, no. No, 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 no. Where is it?
Mr. Mayor, you want, I can help you. The, the
Yeah.
The motion is alter previous direction and conduct negotiations with the current service provider. That's the motion. You got a second, so we should vote on that.
Okay, correct. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion fails, uh, for lack of a vote, uh, to pass. Okay. Um, now, is there any, uh, since, since that is taken care of, which this is a process where they're new, so it's, it's great to see them, uh, venturing out with it. Any discussion on the cost or the contingency or the timeline, uh, that McAfee has, uh, put forward? Because I know time is of essence for anybody to be able to, any competitive to properly put together proposals, votes, and actually the facilities that they would need to acquire contracts with. Okay, otherwise, looking for motion?
I'd move staff's recommendation authorized the city manager enter into an agreement with Sloan-Vasquez and McAfee.
Got it.
Did I get it right, Joe? In an amount of sixty-six thousand five hundred and seventy dollars conducted competitive procurement process for solid waste services. And, uh, prove the sup- the supplemental appropriation, the amount of seventy-three thousand two hundred and twenty-seven dollars from the solid waste franchise fees.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Aye.
That's, uh, three to, three to two. Uh, action passes. Thank you very much for the time and effort that was gone and all the information that came out tonight. Okay, we're gonna start getting ready. Okay, we're gonna start getting ready to move on with the, uh, few things that are left on our list here. Okay. Wow. Man, that was my toughest in eleven years. But I really thank the public for being very good, uh, um, with one exception, uh, through the whole process. Uh, moving on now, um,